Good evening, welcome to tonight's council meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. First thing I'm gonna open up for is public forum if there's anybody here wishing to address the council that's not on the agenda. Looking out in the audience and seeing a lot of empty chairs and no movement, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public forum and ask for the approval of the consent agenda and changes. And Ethan George does have one important point to bring up on that.
Mr. Mayor and Ethan, in the consent agenda, there is for the voting for the KD K-CAP and delegates were Mr. Travis and Denise Clausen, and so we need a new person there before we
We don't have a secondary delegate. So, any volunteers?
How often are these meetings?
Once a year.
Yeah.
And it's gotta be an elected official, like it can't be a staff person, so it has to be
Right, so I'm basically volunteering unless somebody else wants to.
So would somebody like to make a motion to accept George as the
I make a motion to accept George as
Slip of the tongue.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to accept George as the secondary alternate to the K-CAP voting. All in favor say aye.
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 Same sign. Now we can pass the
With that, Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion after reviewing the consent agenda as submitted, I would make a motion for approval.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
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 Same sign. That stands as approved. We'll move on to unfinished business. First item is distressed property at 308 Chestnut. I think Ethan kinda put this on here as a placeholder. If you guys have noticed, they do have a new roof on all four buildings. I believe the closing is scheduled to happen real soon. Has it? You guys got a date on that?
They told us
Gave us a proposed date, but I don't remember off the top of my head.
It was that first week of October. We've got no, no confirmation and I heard Jeremy's update, I think they were maybe potentially still struggling with some of the land, you know, the survey, I guess, on the property. But as far as we know, I mean, both sides still say there's a contract in place and that they are working with a closing agent to close, so.
So we should probably continue this to the next meeting and between now and then, Brad or Ethan, you guys reach out to make sure that we have a firm closing date to satisfy the council. Everybody's good with that?
It still feels, still, still feels fishy to me.
Yeah, I know, like, should we not set like a like a, if we're still in the whim, like, at a certain time from now, I mean?
We can continue it as long as we want.
I mean, I don't know that we want to keep pushing it back all the time if they're
Well, at the end of the day, the good thing that's happening is the improvements are being made to the facility.
Yeah, you hate to see him lose that.
You lose camera.
Hate to see anybody lose that.
Well, I'm not saying that I don't appreciate the improvements. What I'm saying is I feel like we were kind of clear in the like, that we were wanting things to, like, you follow through with your end of what you say you're gonna do situation, I guess is where I'm at.
I think it's reasonable on those properties, as long as he's had ownership, as much things have been going on with them that they probably do have some things that they're having to go through to get everything exactly right for a closing.
I, I will agree with that, but I will also agree here, because Ozzy's name is still attached, I'm still very suspicious. I'm very suspicious.
And that's why I think we should continue it, get a dead
We need a date.
For closing.
I wanna see a date.
And that, well, that actually needs to happen before the next meeting.
Yeah.
The closing needs to happen before then.
Well, there's no more, go ahead.
No, I don't, I'm like, I mean, I don't know what we can even, I mean, what even are, would our options be?
We can still tear it down.
Well, by next, I mean, there's no reason, okay, they should have been
Can we not say by our first meeting in November? Like, if you don't have, like, things closed and whatever, like?
Well, I wanna continue it to the next meeting in October and
That we can have this conversation like again about like them not, sorry, and I'm not trying to be condescending to you, I'm just saying, I feel like we keep coming to this table and they keep saying, you know, oh, well, we're still ironing some things out, or we're still like
If, if they have
I'm not trying to say I don't understand that, well, I guess I am, cuz I don't understand that and I'm not the most patient person, and so I just feel like we're, we're a business too, like, and I think we've been more than like, understanding and clear about how we feel in regards to the one person at least. So, that's all, I guess, I'm saying. I don't wanna keep pushing it back and pushing it back and pushing it back, and then, oh, here we are in January, still saying, well?
No, I agree, I agree totally.
100% with you if they hadn't done the roof, but if there's, if we're seeing progress, that's all we want.
This is how I see it. If, if the issues, the delays are because of issues Mr. Rakus has brought up, then I'm not sympathetic. If these are legitimate, hey, we need to find this document, or if these are something that's out of Ozzy's control, I can, I'm patient with that, but if these are things that Ozzy's causing the delay with, I don't have the patience for that.
And I think these are, they're conditions, the property lines and stuff like that, they're title issues, so it's not
Primary one was the, the way that the, the title descriptions were done, particularly on the portion that the city now owns.
Right.
There were some discrepancies in how that ultimately got filed and, and the old records and how they poured over against each other. That's a big part of it. I don't know beyond that if there's any other delay, so.
I guess, well, considering everything
Or, I remember you, you know, you, you suggested they have to make, be making progress every day. I go by there every day, and there's people there doing something every day.
Yeah, yeah.
So
Yeah, they have to be making progress.
I think they're living up to our expectations on that part.
I probably should have thrown on there, and Ozzy can't mess things up. I should have thrown that at the end of it.
Oh, you still can.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, with that, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna make a motion to continue this to our next regularly scheduled council meeting.
Second. Have a motion in a second to continue the distressed property hearing for 308 Chestnut to the next council meeting. All in favor say aye.
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 Same sign. That passes. Next item under unfinished business, IT server replacement. So Ethan's gonna
Oh, was I supposed to make copies of this? I'm so sorry, I thought No, and it's not much that wasn't already in the packet. It's just the formal proposal. So we've reached out to imagine they've dealt with CIC. Essentially, the two options, as our server is entering its end year of life, trying to get this done, you know, early, early quarter two of next year is when we fall out of warranty and, and support for our current server, which is a physical on premise. Essentially, there's about a $15,000, 16, excuse me, rounding up cost over five years, and that was, I felt, a fair way to evaluate the total cost because we will have monthly costs with either of these options. The biggest concern, I guess, from a staff perspective, we have with the cloud-based, even though it's cheaper, is CIC, which is our largest municipal software company that we work with and deal with from a staff perspective. Again, the software engineers all swear it should work from a cloud server with, with minimal issues. However, they don't have any client that's running off of a non-physical server, so we would kind of be charting some new territory, I guess, in, in these two. Our municipal software company and then our managed services IT provider, speaking to each other, I mean, roughly, you can find good, good information on either side of the argument of, of whether a cloud-based security is, is better than a physical on-premise security. Cuz with cloud-based, you're not really having to worry about the updates, et cetera. From a staff perspective, since we have managed, that's always been taken care of us by a third party, so not a lot of change for us operationally. But again, I mean, we, we historically have had the server on site, so the, the physical server, one of the costs of doing that is we do have to have the backup where if we're already in the cloud, the backup's kind of built in, so.
Is there any way to test that before we make a decision?
No, I mean, not, not live test us with, from what
It would be nice if we had somebody else that was doing it, but there is no other examples, and that's what bothers me about it.
And a lot of other cities still, like when I reached out to other communities in Kansas, a lot of them are still using physical premise servers. Part of that is with the criminal justice, you have to, you have to verify, and it shouldn't be hard, you know, with Microsoft and imagine they assure that it'll be CEGIS compliant, but any cloud-based server the city would use has to be located in the United States because of the law enforcement information that would be contained on the server. So, again, I don't think that's a big headache, but a lot of cities have still kept physical premises, I think.
Well, that, the difference, the savings in cost, if you sell over five years is 16,000, which is about $3,200 a year, you split it up over five years. Is the level of aggravation that it may cause you worth $3,200 a year?
Don't know the level of aggravation, I mean, that's, that's the really hard thing to answer, and, and my fear is, is, you know, I don't know that either side of that coin, you know, will probably point the finger at the other one saying, hey, you gave us bad information, or we didn't have all the information.
Here's the thing, if somebody cuts that fiber coming to town from Idea Tech, guess what? Our whole city hall's shut down. If the server's here locally, you guys could still be working on server-based stuff, even though the internet's down. So I think that's one thing to consider.
I've been there, did that. Harvey County cut our line to Bentley. Took three hours to get it fixed. That was it. So
Which is not bad, but it's pretty darn good.
Well, don't you feel like in today's, like, world of technology, that's where things are moving?
Well, for example, Sean, I, you use Skyward. She does, I do, yep. Come on, guess where it is?
It's the cloud.
And, and Pat can probably
Watson.
Probably talk about it much more eloquently than I. I mean, CIC right now, and, and one of the issues, I guess, why we have concern to CIC is cloud-based as well. I mean, we're running off of their farms out of Colorado essentially for that, and then they kind of have a local backup on our server, I mean, that gets the information updates. But all of our information, and that's kind of one of their concerns, is like you kind of already have a cloud environment, and now it's gonna be a cloud running in. But again, everyone that we've talked to has, has said that they don't believe there's any reason why it shouldn't work, they just don't have good examples of any potential, you know, latency or something like that, that had been caused by it, because none of their clients are currently working in the Azure cloud-based system. And then the prices in your packet do, that beast was the Evidence Software, which when the PD originally did that, we ran that kind of on a separate piece of hardware we had. We wanna migrate that all, so we are planning to do the beast optional migration to get that fully integrated with our current server. It was a cost savings for us not to, not to do that at the time, but now that we're getting a, looking at a brand-new server, we are planning to integrate that. So if you're wondering why there's a bit of a cost difference as far as some of the numbers on here versus what was in the packet, we had already added in that cost for the beast migration. I don't know, Pat, if you have any strong thoughts. I mean, everything else, I mean, we'll still need the server room, there's the camera servers, everything like that, I mean, would still be housed there, we just wouldn't have the that one to two pieces of hardware. Labor's roughly the same, the anticipated downtime about the same for whatever project we go to, which they believe, barring any issues, would be less than one business day, I mean, to get everything rolled and, and migrated, so.
How long does it take them to get here on site if they need to?
To get here, like, when we call them?
Yeah, the premises, server.
They have offices in Sterling and Wichita, so usually less than an hour.
Well, my question is, you and your staff are gonna be using it. Considering everything that you can anticipate going wrong with either system, which would you, you and your staff rather be working with?
I don't have a preference. I mean, I think both are gonna be fine.
If it works flawlessly, I mean, that's the big thing that I guess has given us the most hang-up of, is not knowing how CIC will perform. But I don't know that even with the performance, it would be, I mean, even if there is some latency, I guess, in, in the CIC data in this setup, you know, is it latency at the point where we would arguably notice, you know, or where it's actually impairing operations? I don't think it would be that bad by, I mean, from what we're hearing.
I'm sure other cities that work with CIC have similar.
You know, you have these people developing these programs and all, and they're, you know, talented people. I, I can't imagine in, in this industry, you have, have an issue you can't find a workaround in a timely manner.
Yeah, I mean, I think the biggest point would be what, what the mayor brought up of right now, and, and even historically, like when we lost Cox. Yeah, the city, you know, phones went down, but we could still operate within CIC because the server is on premise. Now, internet-wise, we did leave the Cox for redundant rollover, we're, you know, also looking at. It wouldn't necessarily help us in the terms of fiber, but if there was damage to the dark fiber, we're trying to maybe look at, you know, an alternate feed point at either the wastewater treatment plant or Public Works, so the, our dark fiber is actually looped. And that would just be more setting up some hardware, but we do have redundant internet rollover that we left in place for emergencies. Obviously, we don't pay for a stellar connection, but that can be one phone call to Cox and dialed up if we needed to, like if we lost Idea Tech completely, so. I think the biggest change too would just be the, the monthly expense going out in terms of financially, the, the cloud base sees a larger monthly go out on a continual basis, where the on-premise obviously has that big upfront chunk and then time, time after that, so.
What rings in our mind is not that long ago, Verizon. How long they were, how long they were down? And did they announce what happened? No. No. It was probably an update somewhere, some, but not all people in Kansas who are Verizon users lost access. But the majority did. And if you're in the state of Illinois, you lost it all, I mean, just, so that says something about the web version as opposed to a local system.
Well, here's one more thing. You know, figure it was about $3,200 annually for the first five years of the offset. That divided by 12 is $266 a month. Once again, is that $266 a month worth saving over your peace of mind, knowing that you can continue working no matter what?
Well, and with the extended monthly cost of the cloud-based server, did you do a total ROI on that or cost of it?
Yeah, I mean, it goes, and some of it was with the data, we only went with the one year, we'll probably need to talk, you know, more of, of looking at that, but that would drive the difference between them up. I mean, we did the cheapest backup for the on-prem. So you'd see that lesson, like if we went with the seven, I don't know that we need unlimited, you know, retainage of data with our backup. But I mean, I think from a staff perspective, we're, we're willing to try it because, I mean, it is it is a difference, it just, and anymore, it does seem to be more of the push. But I don't know, Pat, did you have, again, from
I mean
your experience in setting it up?
Side of it, I know it works because they have a server farm that they run for some cities.
Yeah.
They're just, they're hosting the server and not, you know, Azure. So the system does work that direction, it's just now they're throwing Azure into the mix that really shouldn't be any different than the hardware they're sitting there running at their server farm. So I said, I don't foresee that being the big problem. The one that I don't, can't put a finger on, and it doesn't, like he's, Ethan said, it's the possible latency of going out to the server farm. I'm sure these other cities are running into that too a little bit, but if it's not bothering them enough to pull it back in, then apparently it's not that bad. And I don't think Azure would be any different. It would probably have roughly the same latency, cuz you're still going after the same kind of data. So it me, old school, I do like my own server, so, but I don't see any problem with it per se, per se either in that respect. I mean, it's, it is a definite savings over time and it's a little harder to set up, but beyond that, I don't know if I got any great answers. Charlie probably has more than I do.
Would you have better remote access? Like if you were at home?
I honestly, I don't know that I, I would know that, and with the virtual.
That could be beneficial.
It's gonna probably depend on how they handle the connections upfront, cuz if they set up a local VPN to take the computers directly there from here, then you'd have to have a VPN on your own, whatever you're using at home, which
We do.
You do take a, a computer home, so it would probably be partly imagined that they would have to just put it on there so you could have access from home.
Yeah.
Do you VPN from home now?
We have to VPN.
You and Julie Boatsy, can Julie VPN? Just you?
I just, I, and, yeah, I mean, any staff member can be set up for it right now. I think I'm the only one that's active. Cuz we don't have a lot of people that work from home, so.
Yeah, so based on that, I mean, if all you had to have was VPN in here to City Hall, then you could get on it, wouldn't be no problem, let me say.
They don't.
I'm, I'm like Pat, I'm old school, I prefer a server on site, but it's ultimately up to you guys.
Sounds like staff prefers onsite to
I mean, I
I don't know enough about it, I guess.
I know even less than
I say, I mean, it was one of those of, you know, normally we can ask for a clear recommendation, and it was really like, well, you know, there's, there's advantages and disadvantages to both potentially, and it's really your guys' preference. They, I mean, they're not advocating much one way or the other, just.
I think the long-term, the problem for onsite's gonna be the cost of the software, cuz Microsoft isn't getting any cheaper on any of their software unless we can find some open source to run it. I don't know if CIC's gonna wanna switch off of that too. They may, cuz it's gonna start affecting them across their business, but, you know, I think you'd still do it now, so and reasonably priced, I guess, but, you know, in the future, it may become, no point happens with.
That's I have is that, some of the going old school, I hate to use that term old school, but I kind of think maybe that, I'm just hearing that's what you're comfortable with, but you're
Well, George can't get any older schooled than I am. I've been doing this since 1987.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, you, you have a deep IT background. What's your take on?
Not local.
You, you, you're okay going to the cloud base?
Well, I, I resisted
Even though
I resisted it to the nth when we, when we replaced our servers at school, and we replaced about 10 of them. You know, because each server was kind of doing its own thing. And, okay, but then when you, when you switch from your local, let's say the fund accounting software, that was a local machines. Local intranet only, that was it. And you go to the web-based, it just opened up a whole new world. One of those worlds was you didn't have to buy any hardware again, you didn't have to buy battery backups, you didn't have to make, come in on weekends and ensure that the backups occurred, which most of them were supposed to occur at 11 o'clock at night anyway, cuz you shut everything, shut everybody down, backs up at 11 o'clock at night, and then you, if you had to restore, okay. I can remember taking 32 hours to do a restoration on site. Had that been in the cloud? It never happened.
All right, you got my vote, Charlie.
Never had happened.
Charlie, well, I mean, that's the thing, if we're, we're still going cloud-based for a backup, so in the event, you know, the server is a pile of goo in the morning, we're running off of a cloud until such time as hardware would come in, so.
Well, there's the answer.
I mean, that's the other thing, I mean, I think from a staff perspective, we don't have strong preferences either way, it's just, one, it's we sound unsure about cloud, and that's more, I think, cuz we're getting kind of the, like, everyone saying it should work in theory, no issues.
Well, I think based on, based on Charlie's recommendation, we should just go cloud, cloud-based, and then if we have a problem, I know who to blame.
Well, and just after Charlie's little speech here, Ethan had thrown a couple others, and I'm thinking, well, there's the answer, cloud-based.
No, it, it is an answer.
Yes.
It's not the
I think that's probably the better answer of the two at this point.
That's right, because, you know, I I lost, I lost a lot of sleep going to cloud-based, but I can assure you, we don't, the district does not have the capacity to run Skyward local.
And you're just looking for consensus tonight?
No, if we could get formal, he just wants to get it ordered.
Well, with technology advancing the way it is, is running things off of a cloud more? I mean, is that an easier thing as technology evolves to have things cloud-based versus, and then software has to be upgraded and
It does take the responsibility of, away from us of having to keep our hardware updated, so there is a huge advantage there. And like Charlie said, maintaining UPSs and battery backup stuff, all that stuff adds up, and all that hardware cost goes away, so. It's just unsettling that nobody's really doing it yet, so.
Which I find kind of archaic.
A little bit.
I'll be honest, it is. You know?
Well, we could do this all night. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I am going to make a motion to go with the Azure cloud-based service for a one-time $17,150 and a, and $929.25 a month.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to move forward with the cloud-based server option. All in favor say aye.
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 Same sign. Thank you, council. Now we'll move on to new business. The first item is Resolution Number 2024-14, this is for the wastewater treatment plant. We have a, a nice lady here to tell us all about this tonight.
Well, thank you for calling me nice, Mr. Mayor. Rosemary Saunders from Ranson Financial. Been working with the city staff and Jerry Meyer, engineer on your wastewater treatment plant project. And tonight, you have before you to consider Resolution 2024-14, which allows the mayor to, and city clerk to sign paperwork for the KD HNE application. I have put the majority of the application together and has already submitted the majority of it to KD HNE, cuz the deadline is at 5 o'clock tomorrow afternoon. And so just need to know whether the, the council wants to proceed with the rest And so just need, uh, to know whether the, the council wants to proceed with the rest of the application.
Well, we've all been talking about this for months and I believe we all are on the same, going in the same direction. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-four dash fourteen, a resolution authorizing the filing of an application for KDHNE state revolving fund loan for the wastewater treatment plant improvement projects.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution twenty twenty-four dash fourteen. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. That passes.
All right. Thank you very much. And I have left copies of the paperwork I've already submitted here with Julie. So you have filed copies and I'll get copies of these for you tomorrow.
Okay.
Oh, you got copies already? Okay. Thank you.
Thanks for coming in, Rosemary.
You're welcome. Have a good evening.
For being patient.
Oh, not a problem.
Does she have a signed copy of, of the resolution?
You gave that one to me already. Okay.
Next item under new business is the third round of seed grants. Ethan and I talked about this a little bit earlier, but I'll let him preface the good or bad news of it.
Yeah. Uh, so we reached out following some guidance that we saw when going through it. And because the city of Halsted has successfully participated in the first and second rounds, uh, we're not eligible for the third round. So, um, I guess we don't really need to discuss it. I will plan to reach out to some organizations or, um, others in Halsted that would still be eligible to apply, but the city of Halsted can't receive this grant, this round. So, I guess, and then a small thing is hopefully in the next two weeks, we'll see our second round project.
Just for the public's information, what projects, uh, did we receive the seed grants on?
Uh, the first round seed grant projects went for improvements at the library in terms of their flooring, uh, things of that. And then also helped with the, uh, workout equipment there at the Kansas Learning Center for Health. And the second round is the wayfinding signage, which yeah, hopefully the footings are done and we will hopefully get that scheduled now. And, and up by Friday after next at the latest.
So it's been a good program and Halsted has benefited from it. So maybe we'll be eligible for the fourth round.
Yep. Yep. That's, uh, it's funded through the Tefi legislation the state passed, which was kind of related. If any of you read about the, uh, Heston, uh, individual that came back and it's, um, tech financing proceeds that the state actually gets a cut of. So, and it only goes to communities under five thousand in rural counties. So it's been a, it's been a good program.
Speaking of grants, next up, we're going to talk about a recreational trails grant and Ethan will tell you what he's learned about that.
Yeah. Um, actually had a chance to talk, um, with the, uh, potential consultant on that. Uh, the due date for the recreational trails grant is November fifteenth. Um, we're looking at it in regards to the kind of planned trails in the Oswald Lehman Park. Uh, it is a eighty-twenty split. Um, so we have to have at least a twenty percent local match. Uh, we could potentially do a little more, um, get per, or additional, you know, consideration or points on the grant application if we were willing to do more. Reason I wanted to bring that all to you guys is just looking at that, it was rough estimates of, um, and that's if the city opted for. And this obviously hasn't been final designed or anything, um, which we wouldn't need as yet for the grant application. But like full concrete of everything they had laid out, kind of on the concept plan, um, whatever NSI is three hundred thousand. That includes, you know, the pedestrian bridge over the slough. Um, so if we did an eighty-twenty match, that would see us go up to sixty thousand in terms of a local match. So I guess before we applied and potentially put that on hold for us in terms of keeping capital funds, wanted to make sure you guys were all comfortable with, with trying to seek that. The grant itself doesn't mandate, um, but you do get, you know, extra points if you're building things that, uh, can be utilized by multiple modes, um, you know, hiking, walking, biking. This because it's recreational trail, although I don't think we do that in Lehman Park even has, you know, ATV, that kind of funding. But it, you're not mandated to do like concrete or paved. You can do natural. So we would still have option to kind of dial the project in as we wanted to. So this again was just using the cost estimate off of, if you went solid concrete. And the other thing, obviously, it's not going to pay for like the parking lot. This would literally only cover kind of the trails portion of that park plan. So.
Well, I think anytime we can get any cash assistance on projects we're gonna do anyway, it's, it's benefits the whole community that way. So are you just looking for a consensus?
Yeah, just, I mean, I guess with kind of the understanding of the potential, the worst thing to do is apply for a grant finally again and be like, oh, well, we weren't really planning on that match.
So what are you?
Go for it.
What are, what are we planning to match? I mean, do you want to raise that?
Worst case scenario, we would have to come up with sixty grand, right?
Yeah. I mean, if we asked for the full three, um, and did the eighty-twenty, I mean, we could do higher with it kind of being our first application and not really knowing how, how they score. I mean, I'm fine with leaving kind of at eighty-twenty because usually, I mean, sometimes you're successful on your first time, but like the cost share grant took us two, three times before we kind of got that dialed into everything they're looking.
Now, if you guys remember, we went a little higher on that DOT grant on North Street.
Yes.
But because of that, we were awarded a, a DOT grant that was above any other DOT grant that had ever been awarded in that program, right?
I've found that, uh, on the AFG grants, the fire grants, if we do more than what they say, it increases your access to them, or they have in the past. I know when we got the tanker, we technically only had to do five percent, but we did twenty percent. But that was a big selling point for them. They, that was a federal grant, so.
And that's something we can talk about project per project when we get to that point.
Yeah. I mean, when we can do, I mean, you know, doing a seventy-five to, to thirty split doesn't give me a lot of concern. Because again, I mean, the, the cost estimate is just, just that. It's, it's the consensus. I mean, obviously in a grant agreement, you guys would actually see what the final city match would be. So I mean, if the city, and we have money in our quality of life capital improvement fund, I mean, getting that number up to eighty thousand for a local match wouldn't cause us heartache or hardship, in my opinion. So we could propose a stronger match.
Okay. It's good for our community.
Next thing, counsel, we need to set a work session. When do you want to do this, Ethan? And when's everybody available?
We would say late October, early November. And this is kind of the, barring any unforeseen things, just with the holidays, starting with, you know, Thanksgiving is the last work session of the year. We kind of talk, you know, what we want to queue up for Capitol Street projects, um, get those started. Uh, any other kind of Capitol projects upcoming, updates, and then anything you all might want to see us discuss in a work session setting. So kind of open on, on dates, just late October, early November. Or early to mid November.
I'm very flexible. I can do spot anything. Some of you others have schedules that are difficult.
Well, the eleventh is Veterans Day. Does it have to be on a Monday?
Wednesdays.
No, I say we have meetings on and with.
What about the sixth of November? Wednesday.
As long as it's not a Friday, I'm good.
I can do, I can do the sixth.
Wednesday's the sixth?
Good.
You good with that, Shauna?
Yeah.
All I need is a motion and a second. We can get her done.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to schedule our next, um, scheduled work session for November sixth. Six o'clock, Ethan?
Yeah, works for, works for me and works for you guys.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to set a council work session for Wednesday, November sixth, six P M. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. All right, work session is set. We do have two executive sessions on our agenda this evening, and I would entertain the motion for the first one real shortly.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the Halsted City Council recess into executive session to discuss pending contract negotiations, consulting with the city attorney on matters that would be deemed privileged, attorney-client privilege exemption, KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen B two, to include the city manager and the city attorney.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to enter into executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. We are in executive session. We'll move to the back room, counsel.
Read the.
Hearing nothing from the council, I entertain the motion for the next, um, executive session.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I move that the city council recess into executive session to discuss performance of a city employee and maintain privacy rights. For the reason of personnel matters of non-elected personnel, exemption K S A seventy-five, forty-three, nineteen, B one, to include the city manager and the city attorney to come back at eight-ten.
Second. Have a motion and a second to enter into executive session until eight-ten. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. We'll move back to the back room, council.
We are back from our first executive session. Is there any action to be taken as a result of? Hearing nothing from the council, I entertain the motion for the next executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the city council recess into executive session to discuss performance of a city employee and maintain privacy rights for the reason of personnel matters of non-elected personnel exemption KSA 7543 19B1 to include the city manager and the city attorney to come back at 8:10.
Second. Have a motion in a second to enter into executive session until 8:10. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign. We'll move back to the back room, council. We are back from our second executive session. Is there any action to be taken as a result of? Hearing nothing from the council, we'll move on to the report section of the agenda. We'll start with governing body comments tonight. I'll start with you, Jim.
Mr. Mayor, I didn't make it up to the arts and crafts deal, but it looked like it was a success. From afar, I went around it, but I didn't go to it. I just didn't have time. But it looked like a good deal. Besides from that, I don't have anything else.
Charlie, and before you say something, would you turn your mic on? There you are.
Well, Ethan and I spent three good days in Wichita with the League of Kansas Municipalities' annual conference. I'm just going to real quickly here name the type of things, groups that I went to, sessions. Homelessness and housing, I think that's applicable for Halsted. Engaging across conflicting values, and we probably have some of those in this part of the world. Funding plans, the keynote speaker was right on target. Digital fence safeguarding their cities. Yeah, I mentioned the Verizon thing, but when you talk about cities and hospitals, and unfortunately, we are the hackers' playgrounds. We're a small town, like a lot of other small towns in Kansas, and if they can cause disruption here, they will cause disruption elsewhere and get better paid for it. That's their goal. No matter where they're from, that's what they're after. And due diligence. Service awards, social media, and the First Amendment, the guy discussed a new Supreme Court ruling that came down about a city council person, excuse me, a city manager, this was in Oregon, I believe, that took upon himself to block some citizens. It was actually his Facebook account, but they said no, because you were talking about the city business had become a city's account, which it wasn't. And so Ethan could probably tell you more, but I don't know if he went to that session or not. Okay, he did. So basically, what it amounts to is you've got to be very careful. And if you report on, if you report to or on or about city business, you better get a separate account, bottom line. And another one, meeting the challenges of rural housing. I don't know if Ethan went to that one or not. That one came from Pittsburgh, and I was impressed with what some of the towns are doing, like Iola, Pittsburgh, Garden City, Salina, not only in their own energy storage, their own, and some of those cities have their own solar banks, significant solar banks. Salina's is huge.
Pratt's got a big one, too.
Yeah. And, you know, right now, they're not using the type of best systems that they could, but they will. It's coming. So I want to thank the council, and Julie and Ethan in particular, for providing me that opportunity to go and spend those three days. And these are Kansas. I mean, the problems in Kansas cities, whether it's Wichita, or whether it's Bentley, or it's Halsted, are just about the same. Need some real creativity of how to resolve those issues and make these establishments a better place to live for everybody. And I really appreciate it. I want to thank you. I'm done.
Okay. Turn your mic back off. George, how about you this evening?
No, sir, I don't have anything.
Josh?
I know.
Shawna?
I just thank Julie and the staff for coming in. I know today was a day off, and so thank you for coming in. And it sounds like our maintenance guys had some excitement this afternoon, too. So thanks to them for getting things under control with the water break that happened. So appreciate everybody for stepping up to the call.
I did make a fairly quick lap around the Arts and Crafts Brick Streets event this weekend, as I had to head to Lawrence for a wedding by 10:30. So I did make it around. Picked a mayor's choice. It'll be on display down here at City Hall as soon as he brings it in. I'm sure he didn't come today because City Hall was closed. So always appreciate that event. Would have liked to have spent more time there, but family obligations got me on the road a little earlier than normal. So with that, we'll move on to Ethan for the city manager report. And when you get done with that, you can move into the third quarter financials for us, Ethan.
Okay. Just some big project updates. As I shared, the wayfinding signage, that those footings should be cured sufficiently. So hopefully, miracle signs will be out by the end of this week or end of next week at the latest to get those five signs up, which will complete that process. The KDOT cost share grant continues with the pre-engineering. Sent some of the stormwater changes they made after we had conversations with Pat, I am the engineer, and still on track for hopeful spring bidding on that project for North Street. As far as the KDOT Save Routes to Schools grant, the temporary construction easements for that project have been sent to all the home and property owners along that route. Just to guess, put out there, the majority of those are just asking for a one-year temporary construction easement. Sidewalk will largely be where sidewalk has always been located. There's a few spots that will be changed for safety or flow issues. But if anyone who receives that has any questions, please contact City Hall, or hopefully, we'll need to have the document signed and notarized, and we would be happy to do that for you at City Hall. So very important we get those done, though, as that's a requirement since it is a federal pass-through grant and a KDOT requirement to get those easements in place for this project. And until we get those, we can't even get it scheduled to go to bid. So if you get those, please fill them out, bring them back, or call me with questions, and we will try and get whatever answered. We're still working on finalizing a contract with Nicely, so hopefully, we'll have that in front of you all here in the next couple of meetings as we get some of the language worked out. Did have our follow-up renewal meeting for our KMIT Association Health Plan. If you remember, I shared with you a budget time. They were thinking we'd have less than a 5% renewal. That's going to be about a 2%. So the Association Health Plan still working out very well for us in years two and three. We've basically had no net, because some of you might remember, last year, we actually saw a decrease of about 2%. So this year, with a 2% increase, we've washed for two years, and that has not happened in my time with the city. So really, really glad that the city and previous governing bodies saw the value of the city, joining that, even though that first year we did buy in, it was an increase to us. Four years in, we're seeing the benefits of being a member of that organization. Did have our regional meetings for gas. I've been asked to serve as the vice president for the Kansas Municipal Gas Association, so have moved into that role. The league conference and the Kansas Municipal Insurance Trust, which is our work comp provider. I am going to start serving on that board of directors come December. So some changes there, but good to enjoy participating in these organizations and seeing kind of behind the scenes and helping be part of the governance to ensure we continue to see value in those. And I think those are all for major, oh, no, burying the lead. Ninth Street went through final inspection today. I think there's just some minor cleanup, but overall, project's done. It's open, cured, looks good, you know? So I don't know, Pat, if there was any major things that came out of that from your nice conversation? So, yeah, they are seeding at some point or have seeded already. Okay. So hopefully, weather cooperates and that gets there. So, but yeah, we're happy to see that project done and done on time and within the estimated time. So even with that minor hiccup on the sewer main. And for financials, not a lot to report. You have August and September there. It took a little while. Still, we're finding it. We're still working out the finer points of that switch to the new bank card system and kind of how they are processing payments and depositing those in accounts. But Julie and Jan, our city treasurer, are doing a great job of figuring out that process. It's kind of different from what historically was done with our previous card vendor, but she's getting it worked out and they're getting it figured. You do see, we have basically the main fund that shows a negative balance compared to last year is bond and interest. And then the gas fund, bond and interest is just due to when the timing of our bond payments were in 2023. They were actually taken out in October instead of September. This month, they reflected in September. So that was anticipated, but year to year, it looks like there was a massive drop. It should be, look very good in October when you see this report. And then the gas fund, as we've been reporting, we've been drawing down that balance for quite some time with the accelerated payments. So general fund is still up, thanks to interest income. But overall, for the third quarter, expenditures are running below our anticipations. Revenues are at or exceeding, so we're very happy with that. I mean, it's looking good as we go into the fourth quarter. And then on the capital funds, you'll still see, I will note, probably by the time you get this next one, taking delivery of that new high loader, you will see a nice drop there in the maintenance and administration portion of that fund. And then you'll also see the road improvement budget come down. So please don't be too shocked when you see those balances drop in the coming month or in the next report, because all those bills presumably will hopefully be paid and due by then. But overall, still looking very good, still where we want to be at this time of year. So not a lot to report to you or anything that needs to be called out as far as concerned. So.
Counsel, anybody have any questions for Ethan this evening? If not, I would entertain a motion for adjournment. Motion in a second for adjournment. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say Shawna. We are adjourned. Thank you, counsel.